Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. My name is Kevin Calcutt. I am the Chair of the Board. Sitting at my right, I have my Associate Board Member Jim Lehan. We are missing our third member, Anita Mecklenburg. She is on her way right now. She is stuck at a school committee meeting in her professional district. Over to our left as well, we have our Town Administrator, Justin Casanova-Davis, and he's going to take us through the high-level outline of what we have in our agenda today.
Okay. On the agenda this evening, we have a few action items. There's a recognition of our Norfolk Eagle Scouts. The Select Board will be looking at their liaison assignments, approving Town Hill for usage, abatement of the water bill, looking at executing a lease agreement with NextGrid, as well as adopting sewer regulations. And then we'll have some presentations this evening, hazard mitigation, a high school senior project from Colin Peck, and a discussion of a change in the preliminary tax bill.
Thank you very much, Justin. We'll start with our first item tonight, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, our first item tonight is public comments. This is the period where anybody is welcome to come up and share with the Board. We tend to keep these to about three minutes long, and obviously, since they are not items on our agenda, we don't have the ability to engage back and forth on any topic that is brought forward. So with that, do we have anybody who would like to share this evening?
Really short in the background.
We saw the hand. Feel free to come up to one of the cushy chairs up here.
Usually I speak to kindergarteners. I'm a teacher, so this is very intimidating.
Same capacity over here, don't worry about it.
You're gonna do just fine.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jill Levy. I am a special education teacher over at the HL of Day School. I am coming to you today as a representative of the Norfolk Teachers Association and a member of the NTA's negotiation team as we currently negotiate our teachers' contract with the school committee. We would have more members here, but there is a banquet tonight for the NCTA honoring our principal, Linda Balfour. As teachers, we fully recognize that we are fortunate to work for the Norfolk Public School District. We have a community that is supportive and invested in our education. We are thankful for the appreciation that the community shows us in their grant funding, fundraising efforts, and recognition days. We are proud of the education that we provide students. Dr. Lardy noted recently that being a teacher is challenging work as you design instruction, plan creative and engaging lessons, nurture their social, emotional needs, and ensure that they feel welcome and safe at school. She added, "On a daily basis, you play many different roles, sometimes serving as a substitute parent, nurse, coach, mentor, advocate, and mediator, and you do it all with grace and kindness." Despite our accolades, noted hard work and dedication to the community, we are forced to continue to advocate for fair salary increases. Inflation has outpaced our salaries by 9% over the past decade. Many teachers who hold master degrees seek committee work and second jobs to supplement salary shortfalls. We believe that the school committee and town can work together to find an additional $20,000 per year for the next three years. One way that the town could find the money is to pull from the $1.2 million in free cash that the Town Administrator, Administrator recently verified still remains from last year's funds. Further, we need improvements on parental leave. With the membership of 90% women who nurture and care for the community's children, the average teacher on parental leave goes unpaid for over three months, losing on average At this time, teachers have to use their own sick time to be paid during parental leave. One teacher spoke recently about how tragically thankful she was that she had a miscarriage in the summer, as she wouldn't use up her sick time for a future pregnancy. Currently, we have a new member with a difficult pregnancy. While she was in the ICU in May, she asked to write reports, develop IEPs, and take virtual meetings in an effort to reduce her sick time. Her sick time usage. It is not right to penalize teachers for having children. We are asking the district and the town to provide paid time off for parents so we can take care of our own children. The district regularly and proudly acknowledges that it does more with less, achieving high MCAS scores despite a significantly lower per pupil spending rate than peer districts. Our work within the halls of HOD and Freeman Kennedy is the largest part of what makes this possible. We are asking that the Select Board can support to make these two actionable items come to fruition for our teachers. And thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other people who would like to share during a public comment this evening? We are seeing none, so we'll move on to our first agenda item, which is the recognition and proclamations for three Norfolk's newest Eagle Scouts. Justin, would you mind giving us a touch of background?
Well, previously, I think in May, these three young men, Jackson Henry, Thomas Late, I believe, and Benjamin Simmons, they achieved the rank of Eagle Scout. The Board did agree to do proclamations for these young men, and as part of those proclamations, I don't know if the Board would like to highlight some of the achievements of those projects, but they were a part of the proclamations that were delivered for May 22 as Jackson Robert Henry Day, May 23 as Thomas Christopher Late Day, and May 24 is Benjamin Simmons Day.
Fantastic, thank you very much. So for those who are not familiar with scouting, the percentage of scouts that actually achieve the rank of Eagle Scout is very, very low. It's, I think, around 1% if memory serves. So for three individuals to be able to achieve this through their work in the community, through their achievements within scouting is just unbelievable. So on top of the proclamations that Jim was so kind to share at the ceremony where they were awarded their rank, we did want to take the opportunity here within the context of the meeting to be able to recognize the work that they did, specifically associated to the projects they completed. We did want to give them the opportunity to say hi on the camera or in person, but I don't believe any of them are here, correct? I feel like we would have seen an Eagle Scout cruising through, okay? So in that case, I'm just going to quickly go through some of the work that they did in order to be able to get this achievement. The first one was Jackson Robert Henry. His project consisted of creating a walking path for Gilly's House, which is a residential sober living facility located in Rantham. That walking path will offer residents a quiet, relaxing place to unwind in nature. In addition to a wide cleared walking path, there are several areas to relax, including a hammock, a bench, and a seating area. Many of the fallen logs were repurposed to define the path and used for group seating. And in addition, Jackson, who is a metal fabrication student at Tri-County Regional Vocational Technical High School, built and installed a large wind chime along the path. The next one is Thomas Christopher James. He's, his project consisted of creating a new walking and mountain bike trail in Campbell Forest. With the guidance of the Norfolk Conservation Commission, Thomas and Troop 80 Scouts created a new trail path, removed dead wood and fallen trees, and cleared leaves and general forest debris. Thomas managed the working party, instructing them on safe working practices, and outlined what they were required to do. Thomas added the walking trail to the existing wooden trail maps, which are located at the two entrances for Campbell Forest, and affixed new directional markers to the trees. And the last is Benjamin Simmons. His project consisted of building two compost bins for the Norfolk Community Garden. The garden consists of 30 beds, various sizes, filled with loam and compost. The compost bins were needed as users of the beds had no place to discard decayed fruits and vegetables, as well as garden waste. The compost bins provide a valuable place to dispose of this material and generate new compost for the gardens. Benjamin researched compost bins, determined the design, and constructed the bins. Each bin features a sliding front and can be removed to allow easy access to the compost. So I did just want to, I think the Board all agree, we wanted to be able to recognize their achievements, the work they did to be able to supplement and support the community, and once again, offer our sincere congratulations and sincere thanks as well for everything that they're doing to support the community. Jim, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Just a couple of comments. It was my privilege to bring those proclamations to the actual ceremonies, and I've had the benefit of doing that over many years, and I have to tell you, they're one of the most joyful opportunities I think you can have. One of the young men I've known for years, because I coached him in hockey for 10 years, much to his probably disappointment, but anyway, he's just a great young folks. And if you haven't seen the wall plaque out here where all of the names are listed of all of the honors of all of those that have received Eagle Scout, we're going to need a new wall or a bigger plaque, take your pick. The amount of Eagle Scouts from Troop 80 is just absolutely amazing. The ceremonies are incredible. These are just wonderful young, young men, and it's always a pleasure and a privilege to thank them for all they do. So it was a good evening, a nice evening, always is.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very much, Jim, and thank you very much, gentlemen. Once again, we truly appreciate all that you do for this community and look forward to what you're going to do in the future. Our next item this evening is to vote to reorganize the Select Board liaison assignments to town committees. I think maybe we should put this one a little further down the list to give Anita some time to get here. Very good. All right, so we'll move on to our next item, which is to vote to approve the use of Town Hill for the Girl Scouts Welcome Back Event on Thursday, September 7, 2023, from 5:00 to 8:30. Any background on this one, Justin?
Just in closing, your package is a request from Ms. Jen Oliver. This is a Girl Scouts Welcome Back Event. There are no issues on the town side. We've received everything that we need from them, and it's for September 7, and it's from 5:00 to 8:30 PM.
So moved to approve.
I guess I can second, and then say, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anything that we can do to support the Girl Scouts as well? Great opportunity. Our next item this evening is to vote to abate a water bill for One Needham Street. Justin, what do we have for background here?
In the Board's packet, there is a memo from DPW, our public Director of Public Works. This water had been shut off at this location, so I believe it was improperly built, so we're looking at an abatement of $75 and the issues that were there previously, they've been reviewed and resolved.
Very good, thank you. Jim, any questions?
No.
None from my end either? I'll take a motion to approve.
Moved to approve the abatement.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next item is to vote to execute a lease agreement with NextGrid, Justin.
Yes. So in the Board's packet, there's a memo as well as a summary document and a proposed draft agreement. Just for some context, this, how we got here, at Fall Town Meeting in 2021, the Town Meeting authorized the Select Board the authority to lease land of approximately four and a half acres on Sharon Ave to construct, maintain, and operate a ground-mounted solar facility. Since that time, the town, along with the previous Town Administrator, our department heads, and Town Council, we've been sort of negotiating with NextGrid, and we feel like we've reached a suitable lease agreement, which would be the, Town Meeting authorized up to 35 years, this proposed lease agreements for 20 years with possible extensions. I'll just, some of the highlights that are in that memo and the summary sheet are there's an annual lease payment of $40,832, there's an agreement of a one-time payment of $200,000, half of that will be upon execution, as well, the other half upon issuance of certificate of completion. And so we also have Town Council, Jenny Merle here, if there's any questions by the Board, but the tie and, as well as our department has to have been a part of this process, believe this is a suitable agreement to move forward on this, on this lease agreement with NextGrid.
Thanks, Justin.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. All right, reading through the agreement, the payment, the $200,000 payment, half upon the initiation and half upon completion, are those encumbered in any way?
What do you mean by encumbered?
Are they specifically designated for any specific purpose, or do they go into general revenue?
The general revenue.
And the lease goes into general revenue?
Lease agreement will go to the water enterprise fund.
So, but the $200,000 does not?
Correct.
So, all right, so that's, so that's unencumbered funds to the town?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's the only question I had.
I don't believe I have any questions. You said somebody from Town Council was joining?
We have Town Council, we have a representative from NextGrid as well. Jenny is here on Zoom for Town Council, and Tom, but Jenny will probably take the lead, as well as this gentleman from NextGrid.
Was there anything you wanted to add before we move forward with this agenda item?
Nope.
Hold on one moment, we're trying to get audio.
Jenny, do you mind speaking again, just so we can see?
Sure, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Much better, thank you.
No, I said I'm just here in case anybody has any questions. Justin did a great job summarizing where we are.
Very good, thank you so much. As I don't have any other questions, I think, go right ahead, absolutely. Just make sure you get a mic and just say your name before you start talking.
Sure, hi, yeah, I'm Joe Dorfler. I'm here, Council for NextGrid, and appreciate working with Justin and Jenny on this one. It was, it was a lot to go through, but I think we really ended up at a good spot. And just wanted to, wanted to mention that there are a few other things that will eventually need to be executed, so we can do that today as well. If that's easier, we can hold it in escrow. Things include the memorandum of lease, we have also the access agreement and the 5B affidavit. Again, things that will eventually need to be executed, I have copies of all of them here too, if you want to knock those out while we're here, all in one shot. There was another thing, one of the exhibits, one of the B1 exhibits, what was originally attached? Looks okay, but we have a kind of enhanced attachment to it that we would like to offer as a substitution. We're okay with the original one too, but this one shows a little bit more of the, of the right of way that goes along Sharon Ave, that might be a little more descriptive. I have, again, I have copies of everything, but we're also okay with the original document as well.
I think we'll take it, and Jenny and I will take a look at it. I think one of the motions that the Board will consider is subject to final review and edits by the Town Administrator and Town Council.
Is, may I, Ms. Jim? Are these significant changes from the original document?
No, not at all. No, no, it's all with the original site plan, it's just, it looks better. It shows, it shows the right of way, so you can clearly see it on the plan.
What does "looks better" means? I mean, have you, have you changed any of the delineation of the lines, or any of the roads changed, or anything at all?
No, no, sorry, no. They weren't shown on the, they weren't shown on the original one, so we thought it'd be nice to see it, so you could actually see a little bit clearer on the, on the attachment.
Okay. All right, thank you.
From my position, I think that we want to move forward with the motion as outlined today and hold off on the execution of anything in addition until after we get out of this meeting, if that's quite all right.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I mean, eventually we'll get there, just figured we're here.
Yep, appreciate it. Anything else from you, Justin?
No.
Okay. In that case, I will move to approve the lease of an approximate 201,000 square foot portion of 12 Sharon Road to NextGrid Incorporated for the construction and operation of ground-mounted photovoltaic facility, and to authorize the Chair to execute the lease on the Board's behalf, subject to final review and edits by the Town Administrator and Town Council.
I will second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Just a question that, Town Council, you still there?
Mm-hmm, I am.
I just had a question when I was reading through the discharge, Section 2, Page 3, or Page 4. Did any, any of that, all of that look okay to you?
Yeah, it looked fine.
Okay. It seemed a little harsh, but you're okay with it?
I'm okay with it.
All right. Okay, that was it.
Further questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Yeah, I appreciate it, yeah, that's great. So when we will, sorry for next steps, then talk to Jenny.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you. Nice to see you.
Our next item this evening is to vote to adopt sewer regulations, Justin.
Yes. So in the Board's packet is a proposed draft of sewer regulations for the Board to consider. This is authorized by, as the Board is aware, Town Meeting process and Section 7, Chapter 33, 554 of the Acts of 2022, the Select Board are the sewer commissioners, and so they have to provide the best possible public use of the wastewater management system. We've worked with our DPW Director, our Finance Director, and Tom, Town Council, Tom Harrington, to propose a draft of the rules and regulations. I have Tom here who might just want to give a quick overview of that process for, and just let you know how we got here.
Thanks, Justin. Tom, go right ahead.
Thank you. Good to see you, Select Board Members. I think the only thing better than having one member of Town Council staff with you on any given meeting is two, so thanks for that. So you'll recall that at last year's annual Town Meeting, Town Meeting authorized the Select Board to seek special legislation to create and adopt a sewer district in downtown, kind of the downtown area of Norfolk. That legislation was enacted and signed by the Governor on January 3 of this year. So that put into place our sewer district and allows us to operate that sewer district as a proper municipal sewer district. You may also recall that while we have been operating it for the last several years, we've been operating it under a contractual relationship with a handful of landowners out there. And quite frankly, we're running into problems, not being able to act like a sewer district and, and having to act as, as one side of a contract. We couldn't, we couldn't collect back due payments in, in a proper way, or at least in a convenient way, and now we have the authority to, if you don't pay your sewer use charge, it becomes a tax on your property and becomes a lien on your property, and we can do that in kind of a more municipal way, if you will. So that takes effect, our sewer district enterprise fund, which really is one of the drivers of our sewer district, takes effect on, on July 1. So we're getting ready for that, and, and in order to kind of complete that package, we need a set of regs. So I've worked with, I've worked with Blair and Todd and Justin and Rich McCarthy and Kate to kind of get this set ready. And so in brief, and I can go through this set if you'd like, I want to be respectful of your time, so I'll wait until you ask me to do that, but in, in kind of an overview, this is a basic set of regulations, which allows us to operate the facility and to regulate the users of the facility as any other sewer district or sewer commission would. As, if and when things are, were to expand, or we wanted to get more sophisticated, or add more properties to the district, I think we would probably want to look at a more sophisticated set of regulations, but kind of under the thought, let's walk before we run, what we have here is a very basic, clean set that allows Blair to operate the system, he's your, he's, the DPW Director is really your, your sewer superintendent in this case, so he'll operate the system, he'll identify problems, and if we want to find someone for a failure to comply with the regulations, that would come to the, to the Select Board operating as sewer commissioners to levy that fine. So I'll stop there and happy to answer any and all questions.
Thanks, Tom. I think the one question I had was if this was a fairly standard set of regulations that could be applied to most municipal sewer agreements that are out there today? And if so, is there anything in here that we added that was specific to Norfolk that would really stand out in comparison to another community?
I mean, honestly, no. I think it's, I think it's a little tailored, because our sewer district is a small sewer district. So it's, it's, I think it's more unique to Norfolk in, in recognizing that this is a limited district with a limited number of users, as opposed to what you see in many sewer regulations, which we discussed and removed, but what you see in many sewer regulations is the authority to expand and, and how a developer might connect and that sort of thing. And we thought, we thought those would not be appropriate for these regulations at this time, so we removed that. So this is kind of a tailored down set, specifically recognizing the limited size of the district and the limited number of users.
Perfect, thank you. Jim, you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Tom. I know in the past, we've had trouble with collections on some of these issues, and this at least gives us the legal ability to have more leverage in making those collections? Is that correct?
Yeah, and so it's, so basically, collecting a back due sewer charge will be no different than collecting back due taxes.
And it creates a lien on the property?
We can foreclose on the, it essentially becomes a tax against the property. We can lien it, we can foreclose it, we can sell if we need to sell and take the profits, or, you know, take the, the fruits of that sale and apply it to the, to the back due sewer charge.
Okay, and does this agreement sort of realign the appropriateness of the fees associated with the current users? Because I know that was very misaligned over the years. Has that changed, or is that still the way it was?
Well, that's, that will be our next step, is to come up with our, our user fees, but the goal is to, yeah, to, to realign so that it's distributed more fairly.
Okay, and, and that still holds true for the unused property, they still have access to that?
They do.
Okay. All right, that's it for me, thank you.
Blair, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
I do not.
Rich? Very good. Justin, anything else?
No, sir.
In that case, Jim, I would take a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we can move forward with the adoption. Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. I'll sign off now if you don't need me.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, that brings us to our next item this evening, which is a presentation by King Philip High School senior, Colin Peck, on his Norfolk Cemetery Database Project. Colin, please come and join us, feel free to take a cushy seat, or not.
So, hi, my name is Colin Peck. I, I'm a senior at King Philip, or I was. I just graduated a couple, a couple of days ago.
Way to go.
Congratulations.
But I'm here on behalf of Barry and Blair of the Norfolk DPW to, to show that there, there's ways for a project, I'm here to discuss a project, just to show that there's ways for the town to get, to get almost free, free labor every year from, from students and candidates at the school to help out around the town. And I, and I, as much as everybody here wants, wants to see our town thrive, and this would be a cheap and easy way to do so. So what I did here, it's called, it's called a distinction project, where a student from King Philip, starting in their junior year, trades a project of their choosing, whether something they want to, they have interest in, or they see, they see a need around a town to fix. And I, I reached out to Blair at the DPW and asked him if there was anything that he, he needed, he needed done, where, or if he saw a problem that was needed fixing. And he said, that he said there's a deep interest and a need to be a fix in their cemetery, partly for the fact that it hadn't, it hadn't been updated in a while, and so there was a lot of headstones that weren't in, in their database, the previous one, there were a lot of people that, that weren't marked, and so with me logging things, with me logging a name, date, and headstone on the, on an app that we, that we created, it helped, it's going to help us tremendously in keeping and logging names for the future. So once I met with, with Bear and Larry and Barry, I, Barry and I sat down, we created an app together, which, which I went out in the summer of last year, and I logged the name, dates, and a picture of each headstone. That took around six months, there were probably, there are a couple thousand headstones there. And once I was finished around October, we regrouped, put all the information onto, onto the website, and then, as we can see here, there's dots of every headstone, and this will be, this will be, this will be put on, on the town website soon, but if you, if you go up to the corner and you type in, say the name, Smith, say there's someone named Smith in the, in the town, you can click on, at any of the names and see a direct location of where the headstone is, and find a conditions of the text, the stone, and the names and dates of all the people on the headstone. As you can see on this one, there are multiple people, it was probably a larger headstone with a family plot, at the bottom, there's a picture of the headstone. So, yes, soon it will be put on the website in the DPW section for all the town to see.
That is absolutely fantastic. I mean, the fact that you took the time to be able to go through and index each one of these into a callable database has so much value outside of just organization. I'm sure that for generations to come, there's going to be people who are going to want to go and see where relatives or ancestors might be buried there, and this is going to make it so much easier than And this is going to make it so much easier than cruising through row after row, looking for names on a headstone. The question I had for you, Colin, was were there any that were, you weren't able to read? You weren't able to get a good reading on?
Yeah, in the front corner of the cemetery, that's, that's where the oldest names were. So there was, the most, most of them were probably 200 years old, back to the 1800s and 1700s, right there in that front corner. Those were all pretty much unlegible, all broken stone. I couldn't read many of those. Those are, most of them were like huge family, family plots from years ago. Yeah, I can see all the unknowns that I had to mark down, because I just, I couldn't read them.
Gotcha. Jim, do you have any questions for Colin?
Not a question, but Colin's, this project was recognized several times by that graduation and what you guys do is just incredible. Giving a kudos to KP with the bias. You really do incredible things. Some of the programs that these kids do are just outstanding, just outstanding. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you. And Colin, I know that you are now a graduate, so therefore you're not necessarily bound to the KP school system.
He's an alumni.
Correctly, you're an alumni now. But any other ideas that you have for us to be able to leverage the skills of the seniors or juniors, anywhere else in the school, to be able to benefit the community of the town? Please feel free to pass them along, because we'd love to be able to leverage that in the future.
Yeah, I just think starts, starting like junior year, maybe you reach out to students or make it, make it like a public option to them that, that there's resources they can use at the town to better, to better their own town. And in terms of this project, I think maybe in several years, when there's other people that have, that have been, that have been buried there, maybe someone volunteers and takes the, takes the job of, of logging the new headstones and putting them back in the website, just so we have a continuous, new, new variety of people that have been buried.
Absolutely. And what are your plans next year?
I'm going to the University of Georgia to study mechanical engineering.
Could've guessed that by this. Congratulations and best of luck.
Thank you.
Way to go. Thanks, Colin.
All right, our next item this evening is to discuss the Hazard Mitigation Workshop and Eagle Dam Overview from the Charles River Watershed Association. Justin?
Yes, we will have Richard McCarthy as our town planner, as well as a representative from MAPC, who's just going to discuss a final draft of the hazard mitigation plan, the overview of that, and the importance of that, as well as discuss the Eagle Dam.
Rich, how are you?
Very good. Good evening. So I have two guests with me this evening. I have Martin Pillsbury on my right from Metropolitan Planning Council. He'll give a presentation on the hazard mitigation. This is the second public meeting regarding the hazard mitigation plan update. And then Robert Kearns from the, from Charles River Watershed Association is going to give a presentation on the Eagle Dam, which is something upstream from us in terms of what's going on with that. And it all ties in together in terms of hazard mitigation. So I want to, I'll turn it over to you, Martin.
Thank you very much. So I'll go first and then Robert.
And then Robert goes second, yes.
My name again is Martin Pillsbury, Director of Environmental Planning at, am I speaking into the right mic, any mic? Director of Environmental Planning at the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, which is the regional planning agency that this town and 100 others in the greater Boston area are members of. And we're here tonight to talk about the town's hazard mitigation plan. Who's, who's running the?
Cross with you.
Thank you. So just a little context, because I know that you will frequently talk about your comprehensive plan, your master plan, your open space and recreation plan. You don't often have this plan in front of you. In fact, the last time you had a plan like this in front of you was about over a decade ago. And, and that was the first time ever, because it was a newish program at the time. So why is the town doing a plan? This is basically part of a FEMA program across the whole country, to get communities to adopt local plans to help you prepare for and mitigate the impacts of natural hazards. And this is not a mandate from FEMA, you don't have to have one of these plans, but they give you a very big incentive. If the town has a plan, which then FEMA looks and approves, if the plan meets their, their approval, the town will then be eligible for some fairly significant FEMA grants to actually do projects on the ground. So it could be some of the mitigation that the plan is talking about. So think, especially things around drainage, flooding, and other kinds of natural hazards, generators, things like, things like that. So, and the, the grant program that would become eligible from having a plan is actually, it's, it's changed in the last couple of years. It's actually, I think, a more expansive program than it used to be. It's now called Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities. It gets a resilience, kind of a focus to it. And there's actually a lot more money in this, nationwide in this grant program than there were in previous years. And we're told that because of the various federal recent infrastructure investments that have been coming down through the bipartisan infrastructure law and the Inflation Reduction Act, that even more money is going to be put into this and other similar programs. So it's going to be even more opportunities. So this is actually a very opportune time to get your plan together, get it approved by FEMA, and then be eligible for what could be some significant grants. So that's the, that's the carrot. FEMA uses a carrot rather than a stick approach to this. And this plan will, you know, once it's approved, get, get the town up for approval for those kind of grants. Couple of things to distinguish this, FEMA has a whole range of plans out there, you know, everything around homeland security and terrorism, technical, technological hazards like nuclear and chemical, this is all just about natural hazards. This is distinguished from the other kinds of programs. And actually, even within the realm of natural hazards, this is not an emergency response plan. The town already has a plan like that. It's called the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, CEMP. This is about what FEMA used to call the pre-disaster mitigation, to think about before the disaster happens, what can the town do to better position itself, to make itself more resilient, and to reduce its vulnerabilities to the natural hazard events. You can't do much about the fact that the events will happen. We could get 18 inches of rain, we could get 25 inches of snow, whatever the case may be. But there are ways that the town can be somewhat more resilient and put itself a little bit less in harm's way through actions that it takes. And so that's what this plan is about. It's a multi-hazard plan, in the terms of every kind of natural hazard that potentially could occur here is addressed in the plan, even though a few of them are extremely low probability, like earthquake, very, very low probability. Flooding is the most common issue in all the towns in this region, so there's more emphasis on that. Let's go on.
Oops, sorry.
So when we say hazard mitigation, what do we mean by that? You know, there's the definition that MEMA uses, the Mass Emergency Management, which is actually the Sage that runs this program for FEMA in mass. Actions to reduce or prevent loss of life, injuries, and property damage using long-term strategies, both structural and non-structural. So structural projects could be actually changing and improving your infrastructure, drainage patterns that might be causing backups and flooding. Non-structural could be regulations and, and land use matters that help you get more out of harm's way. So you already have measures like that in place to some degree, like the floodplain overlay district. The sewer, the sewer regs you just passed tonight might even play into something like this, if you talk about overflows and that sort of thing. So lots of regulations are in place already. This plan will be looking at opportunities where some of those can be strengthened and improved. And so we ask, you know, basically, what is the set of measures the town has in place already, and what can be done to improve them? And this is the cycle of disaster rebuild, disaster rebuild, that FEMA at the national level, it was trying to get at in creating this program. And this is maybe not so directly relevant to Norfolk, because you don't have a lot of properties that have had repetitive losses, but many communities, we, they've literally reinvested in the same property, and they're still in this place where they're in harm's way. You fix the place up, and you pay insurance rates for it, and then it's hit again by another event. So they wanted to try to, if not break, at least interrupt and, and slow down this cycle by planning before a disaster happening and making your community more resilient. Go ahead then. Oops, I think we jumped over one. Did it? No, that's it. So yes, how do we, how did the town go about doing this, this process? Well, first of all, a local hazard mitigation team was created. Rich was the coordinator of that overall, and it had pretty much all of the major departments within the town that touch on anything to do with physical infrastructure and land use, environment, et cetera. All were part of that team, which meant, I think it was either three or four times over the last few months, putting this together. That team served as the focal point. And MAPC was asked to come in and help actually draft the plan, do the research, pull together the information. There's a whole set of GIS maps in this plan that map out where the hazard are, or where your land uses are, et cetera, how they line up. So we have GIS folks in our office who did this. In this particular case, I actually am presenting on a plan, but I actually can't take credit for doing this plan, because it was done by Adrian Boynton, who was with MAPC earlier this year and last year. She unfortunately left the agency, so, but she left the plan like 95% done. And the main, the main thing was to just finish it up a little bit and bring it back to this plan. So I'm more than glad to do that. There were two public, well, this is the second of two public meetings, as Rich requirements, and I think the first one was, was it in January, or I forget what, December, maybe?
December.
December, right. And so the plan after this will be put up on, it's up on the town website, right?
It is up on the town website, under the Town Administrator Department page.
Right, and so it's available to the public, and we'll, we'll keep it up there for a couple of weeks after this meeting, so that the broader public, not just the people who are here tonight or attending tonight, can see the plan and can submit comments to the plan if they want to. So it'll be a sort of a review period. Once that is done, and any comments have been received, and any final changes are made, we will submit the plan to MEMA, who will review it, and then they in turn will pass it on to FEMA. It's a two-step review process at the state and federal level. And in both cases, as each agency reviews it, they may have comments, they may have revisions requested, which we'll take care of if that's the case. Once they have been through both agencies and find that the plan has everything in it that is required by the program, they will actually contact the town and say the plan is what they call approvable pending adoption. And the only last step will be, that's when it would come back to this board, just to take a vote to officially adopt the plan. So tonight, we're not bringing this forward for action, this is for public information, public presentation, but once it goes through FEMA review, and we know the plan is set and it's not going to change anymore, that's when this board will be given the opportunity to just adopt the plan. FEMA likes to know that the town leadership understands and knows what this plan is. They don't want to just see maybe a few department heads or staff do a plan and turn it in, it's the best kept secret. But they really want to make sure that this plan is vetted and we're up to the top leadership in the community. So basically, the Select Board of Towns and the City Council of Cities has to actually take that last step to just say they're adopting the plan. So that's, that's, you will see this again at some point in just a few months, probably, after it's been through that process. Go ahead. I think we can skip this slide, because this just talks about the process. This, I want to get a little bit more in the time we have to, the content of the plan. So the, the plan really looks into what data is available to really better describe the nature of the hazards that the community faces. We use information such as this little graph here that we pulled together about the Charles River, the nearest gauging station in Dover, shows this, in this case, a snapshot of the floods of 2010, which was the most significant floods in the last few decades. We look at sources of information from USGS, NOAA, and then state sources of information, the state's hazard mitigation plan, the state's resilient climate website, and just a whole range of places where we can gather regional and state level data. But then, even more importantly, we've gone to the next one, we supplement that with locally based information, and that's where the local team comes in. The Public Works, Planning, Conservation, et cetera, they just, they know your town, they know the specific places. And we literally sit down with them and map out places in the community where there's problems with drainage and flooding, whether there may be areas subject to wildfires and brush fires, forest fires, where all the critical infrastructure is. All of that gets mapped out. This is an example of one of the, the GIS maps that supports the plan and shows where actually things are on the ground. Go ahead. This is a wildfire risk map, and it actually shows in the colors, almost all of Norfolk is in either the low or moderate. So, you know, if we were, if we were in a very forested area in the Berkshires, you'd see this be high perhaps. But it's not nothing. There are, there is, you know, there is a wildfire risk in all communities that have a decent amount of open land. So this gives you an idea of where those areas are. The fire chief would have identified some specific areas on here as well, that where maybe it's happened in the past, or where the conditions are ripe for potentially being for more wildfire, especially if we have droughts, which by the way, we've had, as you know, probably droughts in the last few years, more than we have in previous years. Go ahead. We look at, like I said, it was an all hazards plan, we look at all, range of other hazards, extreme heat, there's drought, that map portrays the drought of 2016, where almost all the Commonwealth was in a high, high state of drought alert. Earthquakes, again, one of those hazards, very low probability, but if we ever had one, it could have some significant impacts. And extreme precipitation, there's a map that shows about the pattern, and in fact, this US map is showing that all throughout the Northeast, we're subject to a greater amount of increased intense precipitation than even the rest of the country. Lucky us. And then looking at the critical facilities, the, the team identified, and then we mapped specifically 60 different sites, which include disaster response sites that provide utility to the town, like police and fire and to public works facilities, sites that require assistance, the other side of the coin, such as elderly housing, daycares, et cetera, places of assembly which often can be used for, you know, assembly for, you know, shelter or whatever, and critical infrastructure like dams, pump stations, communications, and that sort of stuff. So they're all mapped here. There's an inventory in the plan, a list there out, and then each of those is shown up on the map where the location is. So this is kind of the, this is kind of the meat of the plan, and as a result of all this analysis, what are the risks and what are the town's existing mitigation measures you have in place already? Here is what the team came up with. It's a list of 30 specific items. I know this is a lot of text, so I'm not going to read through this, but you folks can read, the plan actually lists these out and talks about each one of these. So this goes on for many pages, but just to give you a flavor, that there's a wide range of actions that are recommended in this plan for the town to take under consideration over the next five years. These plans are considered to have a five-year life. The approval that FEMA gives the plan will be good for five years when they do it, and then you'll need to actually renew it and update it for another five years if you want to stay current and stay eligible for grants. So some of these measures would be longer term in nature. Some of them might even take longer than five years if they're, if they're expensive, big infrastructure projects. Others could be lower hanging fruit, that you could do more quickly. Go ahead. So final steps in the process, as I mentioned before, we'll have the public review of the LPL plan online. We're asking folks to send comments by June 20th. After that is, the plan is turned in, as I mentioned earlier, the team and MEMA will review it. The town would then adopt the final plan. FEMA will issue a letter of approval that has the five-year dates of approval, beginning and end of that period, and the town will be eligible for it. I think there's one more slide which just has the contact information, this is the, unless you've changed it, Rich, I'm not, that was the link I had a few days ago. I hope that's still current.
Yes.
Yeah, good. Okay, so that's the link online to, to the town, where people can actually download and see the plan. And any comments that folks might have, there's, there's Rich's email address to send, and we're asking for folks to, if they have any comments, send them to us by the 20th of June. We will be turning those around and submitting all of this back to you maybe before June 30th, which is the fiscal year. So that's, that's the goal. That ends my portion of the presentation, but we have, so, I don't know whether you want to have a question or?
If we could just get a few questions out of the way for the first half before we move into the next one, that would be appreciated.
Sure.
So quick questions I had. One, I didn't see great white attack on the hazards that you listed, so I imagine that that's not something we necessarily have to work.
I always start out this, what's wrong with this picture, is my question. However, you notice the obvious thing that's wrong with this picture. There's a second, slightly less obvious thing, and I'll let people think about that while you ask your question.
I'm not that perceptive, unfortunately. I did have two questions, though, about the content of the presentation. First off, thank you so much. The first one was associated to the recommended mitigation strategy. Are those prioritized? Do you rank those by the most impactful items, or they just general?
They are prioritized high, medium, and low.
Gotcha.
So they're not the kind of things that you can put a definite point quantitative, you know, but the team actually, you know, thinks about overall, how much impact and benefit would this have? How much might it cost? Weighing all those things, it's a little bit of a cost benefit feasibility, acceptability issue. So it's somewhat qualitative, but yes, we don't want to just throw a long list and say, you sort it out. It's like, there is a high, medium, and low ranking for these.
Perfect, thank you. And the other question, I think you might have answered on the side, but how long does it on average take for FEMA to approve these types of submissions?
Well, MEMA and then FEMA, and those reviews are sequential, not concurrent, unfortunately. So you have to do one after the, the whole process between the two of them, three to four months in most cases, and sometimes a little faster. So I don't want to raise your expectations, but yeah, that's what, our experience has done this in many towns. That's pretty typical.
Perfect, thank you. Jim?
I don't have any questions on that, no. Thank you.
I do not either. I listened to you in the car while I was driving, so, thank you.
And I'll just mention, in terms of that FEMA grant program, there's an annual grant that comes out typically in the fall, around September, October. So by then, this plan should be approved. So I mean, you can already start thinking about, are there any projects that you might want to line up under that grant program? So, yeah.
I saw senior center parking lot on there. One of the things that we had to nix. Would be good to get that done.
There you go.
Thank you very much again, Martin. Really appreciate it.
My pleasure.
I'm sorry if I'm being confused because I was tweeting different things. You talked about the Eagle Dam?
That's coming up.
Oh, that's next. Okay, cool. Thank you. That was where my question was.
Segway to that?
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you all for having me. I'm Robert Kearns here with the Charles River Watershed Association. I'll be doing a brief overview about our climate resilience program and so some specifics about Norfolk and then highlight specifics that we've learned about Eagle Dam upstream if you all in Rantham. Next slide. And if you're not familiar with us and for the members of the public, with the Charles River Watershed Association, we were founded in 1965 by a group of residents who are really concerned about the quality of the water in the Charles. All the water in Norfolk, or most of it flows into the Charles River. And we've come a long way since 1965. It's a song, Dirty Water, but there's still a lot of work to do to help clean up the river and really address the issues of climate change that we're seeing here now and we're going to see into the future. We have an awesome interdisciplinary staff, you know, science advocates like myself, education folks, as well as folks in the legal side as well. Next slide. And you may be wondering, you know, where does the Charles River flow? You know, how, where's Norfolk? This map just shows where we are. The river is very winding. The indigenous term was quinobaquin, meaning meandering, and it flows from Milford and Hopkinton all the way to Boston. And all the cities and towns here, 35, are all where all the water flows into the river. Next slide. And zooming into Norfolk, just for context, when we're thinking about water quality in rivers and flooding, the landscapes in Norfolk and other communities have different aspects of how the water interacts and flows. So we have more developed landscapes like your downtown, your parking lots, all those areas can lead to more increased flooding as well as increased impacts for water quality, as well as the undeveloped landscapes like your open space, your parks, et cetera, those help buffer for flooding as well as help clean the water. But there's opportunities to also implement and bring nature back, which I'll talk about, into those built environments as well. Next slide. And this, this is just highlighting for folks here in the room, but also in the public who may be watching online. People may assume that when water flows on those parking lots, other surfaces, that that gets filtered through the sewer, but it actually doesn't. All the water that gets on there unless it's getting intercepted and going into infiltration basins or into rain gardens, which the town has a few of them, which is awesome. But traditionally, a lot of that, that stuff goes right into the river and into your water bodies, your lakes, your ponds nearby, whether it's dog poop, oil, greases. And the big thing we're seeing in the Charles and which is causing the cyanobacteria blooms downstream is the phosphorus, which you all are very familiar with, with the regulations coming from EPA and the state. Next slide. And then what I'm talking about today and sort of in general, Charles River, we've been really advocating for is bringing nature back into the built environment. And that's, like I said, the green streets, the rain gardens, you know, preserving open space where you can, as well as looking at things like river restoration, daylighting and the like. And, and, and one of the best kept secrets that no lot of people in Norfolk may know or may not know is one of the first nature-based solutions we have in the Charles and in the country was the natural valley storage area where the Army Corps bought a bunch of land to help hold back the floodwaters that's impacting downstream of Boston. So that's really one of the first we've seen in the country and then we're sort of, today are implementing things similar to that and a little bit different to bringing the nature back and preserving it where we can. Next slide. Just want to highlight, and this, this goes into the hazard mitigation plan and your MVP plan, but we do have some environmental justice communities in Norfolk, including the prison population, and I just want to highlight, we have that, that census block district on the map. And those populations are more likely to be negatively impacted by climate change. I just want to highlight that. Next slide. And I'm not going to read all this, but I just want to congratulate you all for taking great action on things, including the hazard mitigation plan that Martin was talking about and just really congratulate you. And from COWA perspective, we want to be a resource of the town and to help, you know, help you guys find grants and, you know, we've been working with the town and on the Flood Model Grant as well as other MVP grants, so we just want to be a resource for you all, the town. Transitioning on the next slide. Speaking of the Flood Model, this is just a slide showing, I'm not going to read all of it, but big picture, we're looking at where flooding is happening today in Norfolk and surrounding communities, but also into the future with climate change. And we're looking at your stream crossings, your culverts, your bridges, looking at wildlife passage, but also flood impacts. And the map on the right, it's kind of small on the screen, but that shows the corridors, which are mainly around your stream corridors like Eagle Brook, Mill River in the Charles, that are going to see more flooding impacts with climate change. Next slide. Now zooming in on Eagle Dam. Okay, next slide. Oop. Don't have it.
We don't have any more, we'll pack it out of it.
Oh, that's it? Well, well, so I have slides here, but that's okay. But I'll just talk it in general.
Imagine.
Imagine. It was, it's a low hazard potential structure, it's in poor condition, or actually unsafe condition, and we've been working with Weston and Sampson and the town of Rantham on a Phase Two for Eagle Dam, looking at where flooding is happening and where in the future. It was breached in the 1800s and it actually caused, I have a picture, unfortunately you can't see it, but it's at City Mills is a plaque actually about it there, where one of the people there was a railroad tracksman and he actually almost died. They thankfully saved him, Alonso Morse, after the dam breached in a storm. And so we worked with Weston and Sampson to look at, look at any impacts downstream flooding if the dam were to be removed. And the town, just to be clear, the town is not making a decision on that. And they found that there are no changes in flooding downstream if the dam were to be removed in that scenario, and no increase in flooding for any residents in Eagle Brook. This dam is not serving a purpose for flood control, so by removing the dam, you're not going to see increases in flooding. And I'm sorry, we can't see the pictures, but, but we have some images of sort of like the flood maps comparing them, and I'll definitely provide it to you all after the fact. And we will be doing a memo to the town and to Rantham about this as well. So yeah, any questions on that?
What was the purpose of the original dam?
Great question. So the original dam at Eagle Brook was done for a mill for, I believe it was, and then there's subsequent factories at the site, but they're no longer there.
Thank you.
Of the 20 dams on the river, how many are private?
On the Charles? I know it's, upstream of Natick are all private, except for Milford. There's a, there's a few in Milford that are private, so are public.
Does that make it more or less difficult for you to mitigate some of these issues?
For, with respect to.
Being private, that they're private dams?
It depends. Some of the dams on the main, are you talking about Main Sem of the Charles?
Yeah.
Yeah, Main Sem of the Charles River. There are some dams that the owners are absent, so they're not, there's no maintenance, like Franklin Medway Line, that's one. There's two there, as well as, there's one in Box Pond in Bellingham, it's sort of not much maintenance on those, but the public ones, but all of them are under the Office of Dam Safety Regulation, but some of them, the owners are a little sort of absent. It's not great.
Thank you.
Robert, I knew that you've been fantastic, you and the team have been fantastic about holding tours of the areas that you're talking about or by having webinars for people to join to learn more about the kinds of initiatives that we're doing, whether it be over at Mirror Lake, Archer Lake, or even over there at Eagle Dam. Do you have any other ones coming up in the future that we can let people know about?
Yeah, right now, we don't have any Eagle Dam ones, but we're going to be having some events in the summer about downstream Watertown Dam. We're thinking in September doing a, we just had some walks with the fish runs, but yeah, in September, we're going to have some good events there. Eagle Dam, we don't have any public tours yet, but we are going to be reaching out to the first responders in Rantham, and we can definitely do it in Norfolk too, to talk about it as well.
That would be fantastic. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
No. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin, anything else before we move on?
Nope.
All right, once again, Martin, thank you so much.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Robert, thank you. Thanks, Rich.
Rich, thank you.
Let me answer your question on my last slide. Besides the land shark, people were dropping to the wrong side of the road. I was taking it in English.
Duly noted.
And that's why, people don't usually see that one, right?
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Good night.
So we needed, earlier in the meeting, we had decided to push down the reorganization of liaison assignments, so wait until you got here.
Excellent. I heard that.
Jim and I were trying to think of some made up liaison assignments that we could assign you since you weren't here.
No, 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 no.
Oh, I thought we had it done.
But if we could do that now, Justin, I think that would be appropriate. Justin, anything else for a entryway into this item before we get started?
No, just after following the annual town election, the, as you all are aware, the Select Board reorganizes and this is also, you know, opportunity to take a look at, you know, the liaison appointments and what may interest for the following fiscal year.
I do have some input too before we, we start it. I would like to see police, fire, and DPW put back on the list for liaisons.
So may I talk about that for a second?
Sure.
Because you had mentioned that before, so it has bounced around to my brain. And I feel like, and I think I learned a lot when I went to that conference. What was the conference that I went to?
Excuse me, the Massachusetts Municipal Association Conference.
Yes, MMA Conference about, like, what is our role in, in the town? And I think, still feeling like I'm new at the process and everything, I feel like the town departments are in Justin's domain. And that doesn't mean we can't visit them, learn about them, ride along in the car. I know you recently had a ride along, and that we can't do those things so that we're informed, informed board members, but I think the managing or running of those departments are Justin. And I think we had big conversations when we transitioned our town administrator to this, and I think we hired, we didn't hire Justin to be a manager for us, we hired him to be a leader in the town. And so I think in terms of the department liaisons, I think that that's Justin's role. And that's the way it makes sense in my head, that that is Justin's role and, and we are our partners with him in that work and we can visit and need to be informed and need to ask questions and need to know the players to the best of our ability. But I feel like the, the boards are where it's our obligation to try to build those liaisons, but the departments are in Justin's corner. So that's kind of how, because I thought a lot about, because I value the expertise and your experience that you bring to the role, and I thought, well, how would that work? And so that's where my brain came to be.
I wouldn't argue with any of the logic you have, but I, I'm not sure I agree with you. Liaisons are not interfering in the operational components of the town. Having a liaison to fire, police, or any department in town doesn't in any way usurp the relationship that the town administrator has. It never has in the past. I mean, a lot of it depends on the individuals involved. If you put yourself in a position of interfering, that's on you. That's not on the process. I think it's, I think it is actually in our best interest to have a member of this board have a relationship with the critical departments of this town. I think that's a critical component of how we operate, and we are the executive branch of the town. If it's managed in a way that it is a relationship and not interfering, if you would call sort of a business relationship, where you're talking about operational considerations, then I would agree with you. If that, that's when it gets in the way. But that's on us to make sure that that doesn't happen. I think it's important that, that these departments have a person to go to on the board, not any way that usurps his authority, Justin's authority, or any town administrator's authority, but rather having a relationship. I think it's good to maintain those relationships.
So I, I would see these liaisons different from the relationships, and I think that the relationships, I appreciate that the strength of our relationships is going to be the strength of our town, right? And so I, I agree with what you're saying about that. I wonder if those relationships belong on this page, and if they do belong on this page, then it should be with all the, all the departments, right? Are all the departments going to have a liaison? Or if these are the boards that we need to partner with these and have liaisons to those? Anyway, I'm going to stop.
See, I don't, I don't think there's a difference. I mean, you, look at the list that's on here. You're talking about various commissions, Board of Health, we're, we have no authority over any of these boards. They are independent boards, yet we are creating a liaison with those boards so that they have a relationship with the Board of Selectment. We have no authority over the police, fire, or DPW. It, to me, is exactly the same. We are creating a relationship with various departments that are critical, integral parts of our community, and I think we need to have a relationship with those boards. We don't, we, we have no authority over conservation, or historical, or any other department. So I don't see where you find that distinction. I, I think one is the same as the other. We're, we're not trying to interfere in the operations of those businesses, nor are we trying to usurp Justin's authority. We're just trying to be sure that we have some communication. To me, it's all about communication. If, if there are issues going on in the police department that are not part of Justin's authority, I think it's good to know that. It's good to know and have an awareness of what's going on within the community. I don't see that as a threatening component.
And so I, I don't see it as threatening either. I just see it, I'm thinking about logistically in terms of running an organization, right? So in terms of running an organization, and so if, if the town of Norfolk is our organization, and I'm, I'm new at this, so bear with me as I sort of make sense of this in my mind.
Differing opinion is a healthy conversation every time.
And I appreciate, I appreciate that we can do that together. So thank you, Jim. So in running the town of Norfolk, town of Norfolk has many pieces. They have employees that are paid, members of our town, that our town pays, and, and the employees are clustered into different departments. And then we have volunteer, or volunteers, tons of volunteers that we couldn't run the town without them, right? And those are the volunteers that we're talking about on these boards, and so these volunteers support also the day-to-day work of the town. So that's how I make sense of it in my mind. And so for the employees, Justin manages his departments and the department heads, and he does that work because that's what we hired him to do. And in terms of the volunteer boards, we're supporting them in their volunteer, as volunteers ourselves. Somebody wrote me and said, I pay your salary. I'm like, well, no, you don't.
We did away with those stipends eight years ago.
And that was wise. I know that you were part of that. I think that was wise. But I think the volunteers do that important work and the liaisons there are, it's different than for the board, the departments who are paid employees of the town. And so in my head, there's a line. I can see what you're saying about relationships, and I believe that the relationships will either make us strong or make us fault or right the lack of them, and that's something I think I need to still continue to do better on and, and after my retirement, I can do better on because I'll be more free to do that. But I think there's a difference because the, and I think I'm bringing some baggage from my own experiences because as a manager of my building, as a school principal, the people in my building are, they, they report to me, and I wouldn't want the school board members in there talking to, not, not talking to them, but like being involved in the day-to-day if there's day-to-day things that that would need to happen with me. Not that the school board couldn't have relationships with those people, and I would value those relationships and welcome them into the building, but in terms of the day-to-day operations, I see that separate and that has to be, I have to be the one. I don't know if that makes sense.
See, I, I think where we're struggling is how we define the term liaisons. Because I don't see liaisons as, as an interfering process. I see it not in any way interfering with the operations of the business or any of the individual boards. I see it as an informational chain, as an opportunity for people to exchange thoughts or ideas. For example, if, if you're talking about, let's pick a department, please, DPW. There are a lot of issues, well, DPW is probably a good one because they, their issues never end. I mean, you know, they're, they're just, and they almost involve every component of our community. Being aware of those issues, not interfering in their operational components or decisions that may or may not take place around that, but an awareness of that, I think is a healthy process.[1694.54] around that, but an awareness of that, I think is a healthy process. I think that when you lose that connectivity, when you lose the awareness of that, I think we have a loss at this board and not knowing that. I think it's a healthy process. I think we're on different pages on this.
So, I agree. And I don't mean to interject in what is otherwise a great dialogue. But I think that, from my perspective, I think that Jim is absolutely right in that fostering a relationship with these departments is critical to the success of the board. And I think that in this day and age, we all do that in our own individual ways. I mean, I can see Blair over there already, just trying to delete all the texts I sent him throughout a day about people asking for sign-on traffic mitigation issues. When I have a question that comes up about public safety, I go to the police station and meet with
Me too.
The chief and the deputy chief. My concern about adding them to this liaison sheet is if we then turn that into a single point of contact. Does that then take away the ability for other members of the board? Because as stands right now, if the board has something with the planning board, I reach out to Chad. And I think that if Chad ever had something that he had for the Select Board, he would reach out to me, just as a designated liaison. I wouldn't want to filter that through a single point of contact for these departments that we already typically bother on a day-to-day basis. So, do you think it has to work differently in that case? Or do you think it still works the same way?
I think it still works the same way, Kevin. I mean, if you're, if you're the relationship with the police department, then Tim would want, if there was something Tim felt he wanted to bounce off you or discuss with you, he would go to you. That doesn't preclude, in either or not, in spending time with him anytime we so choose. I mean, that's part of a community. It's being informed and understanding. We're here to do one purpose, is to help people. We don't serve any other purpose. We're here to serve the community.
Absolutely.
To do that, we need a good informational base and understanding of the issues associated with the community. To remove us from that process, I just, I find that difficult. I don't understand the reason to do that. But it doesn't preclude, there's just three of us. You know, if, I would not feel uncomfortable in having a discussion with a board that you happen to be the liaison word, if they came and asked me, or I had a question. That may be the more appropriate way to look at it. If I had something that I didn't understand that went on, I'd say, "Help me understand what that was. Just fill me in." Because if I'm asked, information is something that helps me answer a question with some validity, rather than sitting and saying, "Well, I don't know." And it doesn't mean I need to know everything. That's not the point that I'm getting at. But there are always little issues that come up where it's good to have someone to bounce the thoughts off of. It doesn't in any way have anything to do with the direct reporting that they have with Justin.
So, I agree.
I see it as a relationship. And that's, maybe that's the word we should use, relationship.
Yep. Because I agree with you so much of what you're saying.
I don't see it as in any way interfering.
I agree with you. I'm just wondering that, I agree that those relationships are important. I'm wondering, do we need to formalize, like, we are formalizing our connection to these volunteers on these boards who are doing this work to support our town, right? So, we're formalizing that for these boards. Is it necessary for what you're describing to exist, is it necessary to formalize relationships with all the departments? Or isn't that what Justin's role is? And if there are those things Justin keeps us abreast, or we have an interest to go and investigate or ride along, I'm sorry to tease you, ride along, or have those, work on those relationships that make us strong, right? Do we need to formalize it on this paper in order for that to be?
I think we do. And I'm not going to put Blair on the spot on this, because, and I don't want you to answer this, because you, stay out of it. But if Blair wants to bounce an idea that before he were to take it to Justin, to present whatever it might be, and I'm just being very theoretical on what this might or might not be, or he might say, "How do you think the board might react to this?" Or what have you. I think it's helpful for him to have a resource to go to to bounce those thoughts off of. I don't see where that in any way damages the relationship or creates issues. I think it's all about communication. And I don't see where that in any way creates an issue.
So, if I, I'm going to be devil's advocate in that example, if I were Justin, and I'm not Justin, but if I were Justin, and I had, if I had a teacher who went to the school board and say, "I was thinking about taking this to my principal," I would not think that was cool. I'd want them to talk to me, and we would figure it out.
He's not coming to the Board of Selectment. He's going to an individual on the board that he might have a relationship with to bounce an idea off of. That is common in all industry. It's common in schools. It's common across the board.
Yes. But I'm wondering if it needs, hmm, hmm. I think we're agreeing with each other about philosophically, about the work that we do. I think where we are disagreeing is on what needs to be formalized or doesn't need to be formalized.
Well, I guess we're going to have to agree to disagree.
And we might agree to disagree. I'm just, I'm just wondering if formalizing those department relationships makes our town stronger? Or does formalizing those relationships make it messier?
If Blair had an issue hypothetically, that he wanted to bounce off of a selectman, who does he go to? A select person? Who does he go to?
He could go to any one of us.
But why not go to one that he knows has a relationship with?
But he could do that right now. He could call you right now.
Then what's the difference? What's the harm? Why would you not formalize it then? I don't see the difference.
Because I think it undermines the role of the town administrator. I think it takes the wind a little bit out of the sails of the town administrator. And it says, "You can bounce it off me first before you go to..." I think it undermines the structures that were, before you came on the board, there was a tension, correct me if I'm wrong. But we had tension in our town. We had, we had, one of the things we looked for in candidates for this new role was somebody who could bring us together as a team and to lead us as a team and as a group, as a strong town. And I'm wondering, worrying, not sure. So, thank you for the honest debate. I'm wondering if formalizing that actually accidentally undermines the work that we're asking Justin to do and to bring this into a town family.
Well, if you're, let's be honest, in my opinion, this is my opinion. If you're talking about the tension that went on prior to Justin, I think that tension was directly caused by not having this on the relationship. I think it's what contributed to it.
There were, but before that time, there were, we used to have the liaisons.
Before, before the prior town administrator, relationships with these departments was common practice, had been forever. It changed under the administrator prior to Justin. That's when it changed.
I do think Anita brings up a good point, though, Jim. You know, I remember my first liaison assignment meeting where we went through and we narrowed out and fire, police, and DPW are all on there. Why aren't the other town departments on there? Was there more engagement with the board required from these individual departments? Was it associated to the strong chief provisions that were put in, where there's a dotted line to the Select Board?
The strong chief was kind of in its world by itself. And you may remember that. We could spend a day talking about that one, or at least an evening, anyway. And I remember prior years, Kevin, before you were on the board, we talked about that. And where, and there are different roles. You know, when there are more functional roles, like, for example, finance, you know, where they're pretty much very functional, there isn't a need for that. When you're talking about the interaction with the broader community and the issues that they impact the entire community, we felt that's where the relationship should be. Because Todd's work is invaluable, you know? Without him, we shut down. But it's not the kind of work that we would be, or nor would he come to us on a day-to-day basis for any operational consideration. Blair, he does everything all over town. And every day, he has different events or different issues. And it's not that, and he goes to Justin for any issues that are appropriate under that role. But if he wanted to sit down and say, "Well, how would the board feel about this?" There's nothing wrong with that. Or just an update. I think it's healthy. For example, the way we viewed it in the past was that periodically, if I were the liaison to DPW, I would get down and sit with Blair. And I have sat down with Blair already since I've been on the board and just say, "Tell me what's going on. Fill me in. What are your issues? What's important to you? What are your projects? How do I help you do that?" None of that interferes with his relationship with Justin, none of that. But it keeps me informed, and then subsequently, potentially, you folks informed if there are issues that are sensitive to what's going on. I see no harm in that. Now, if I start interfering in how that works, then that's on me. I'm doing a poor job. If I start getting in the way of the relationship of these two people, that's wrong. And that falls on the burden on the three of us to make sure that doesn't occur. So, I completely agree with that.
So, I think where, listening to you, I think what you just described is amazing. Like, you sit down with Blair, you say, "How's it going? How can I help you? What does your department need?" That informs you. That informs us as the board. I think that's fabulous. I think that where the, where I get nervous, maybe is not the right adjective or descriptor, is when we say, "Blair's coming to you," instead of going to us. That makes me, not that we shouldn't talk with departments and we can't talk about ideas or throw ideas around, but there's a system that we're trying to build, a town that we're trying to build with structures and communication pieces. And I think this, we need to watch and pay attention and learn and partner, but not, I think there should be internal structures that are handled here and not handled here.
But I don't think we're that far apart. Because the way I see the liaison relationship is exactly what I just described. It's just sitting down with Blair and saying, "Tell me what's going on. What are your needs? How are things going? What issues are you trying to deal with?" That's how I see the liaison working. I don't see him coming to me and say, "Hey, you know, I got this problem." And my answer to that would be, that's the guy you go talk to. That's where it belongs. And we met for several hours, I think, that day. And it was all informational. Am I wrong?
No.
It's all it was. And I've already done the same thing with Tim Hines and the other chief. I've done it with both chiefs.
But I think that's fabulous.
It's to be informed. And I think that it's healthy for the board to have that relationship with the various departments. I don't see it as threatening at all.
Not threat, I think that it's fabulous that you have those relationships. I think it makes the board stronger. I think where we formalize it and say, "Hey, I'm your contact person. I'm the one you come to if you have a thing." Well, I think that should be Justin. I think Justin's the contact person. I think Justin is the leader of the town. We are partners with Justin in that work. And to be partners with him in that work, we need to have those relationships that we're talking about. But I think formalizing that relationship is, I think it should happen. I'm feeling embarrassed that I don't have stronger relationships because I haven't had the capacity. But I will soon.
I'm the one that's unemployed, so you don't worry about it.
But soon, well, soon I'm joining your ranks. And so, then I can have a different opportunity to have those conversations. But I think formalizing it adds tension because you want, every decision you make, you want to say, "Does this make us stronger? Or does this potentially..." And I think not including the boards on here doesn't preclude the relationships, the beautiful relationships that you're talking about, that adds to your, as being an asset to the board, right? You are an asset to the board because you've had those conversations and because you understand that at a higher level currently than I do right now. But formalizing it on here creates a tension, I think, that doesn't feel good to me. So, having the relationships, yes, yay, feels good to me. Formalizing it doesn't.
I, you know.
We might just agree to disagree.
This, you know, I appreciate it. I understand your point of view. I really do. I see your point. I don't agree, but that's okay.
Yep.
I'm going to do that anyway. I am going to spend time with the department heads because I think it's a healthy, might, the reason people, I hope, put me here is to be informed, to understand the needs of the community, and do whatever I can to help. There's no other agenda. And I'm sure you two share the same agenda.
100%.
That is the only reason we're here, is to serve the town. So, the only way I can do that effectively is to understand the issues that our various departments are wrestling with on a day-to-day basis. And Blair's a good example because he's got issues every day. And they're different by the hour. And if I can understand them, not interfere, I can't do his job. And good heavens, you don't want me carrying a gun running around enforcing laws in this town. So, you know, it's not meant to interfere. It's meant to be informed. So that when we have these issues that surface to us, there's a basis of knowledge and a basis of understanding so that we can make, at least try, to make educated, sound decisions. That's the way I see it. And if it's the board's preference to not put it in writing, that's okay. It's not going to change the process.
Right. And so, I have no intention to change the process. That's, I think that that is a strength that you have and a strength that you bring to the board. So, I in no way want to interfere with that process. I'm just wondering if by accident, trying to formalize that process doesn't put tension. But I think we're just going to disagree.
I think we're just going to disagree.
So, we're going to...
We're reconciling this.
Yeah, of course. I like the idea that you're highlighting, Jim, that these departments that we're talking about, they have a direct correlation to the community. They work directly and have an impact on the community every day. Whereas, we have this incredible, professionalized team who is handling the day-to-day operations of most of the departments that occur here in Town Hall and in the fire station building, police station, DPW building. We're in the community. We're the ones who are dealing with residents, who are hearing concerns from people about things that they're seeing, not seeing, want to see in the future. And I do think that there is value to being able to connect those departments to that feedback. It doesn't necessarily have to filter through the town administrator in every case. And I do think that there's value there. However, I do think that it does open up the opportunity for us to get Justin out of the loop in some way, shape, or form. Or maybe not even intentionally, but in some cases, have him be on the back end of finding out about things that he probably should know about. So, I think that from where I sit, I would want to maintain his ability to be able to keep a hold and in the loop on those kinds of things. But I still want to be able to give these departments that have the ability to connect directly with residents, that connection to this board as well. So, I would propose that what we do is that we keep that away from liaison assignments. Liaison assignments are strictly for boards and committees. We leave that as that. But we do designate a member of the board to be able to engage with these departments outside of that kind of relationship. So, we have three departments. We have three members. Each one of us takes one of those departments. And if they have something that they need from a community-based perspective, they have that point of contact they can reach out to. And we can rotate that as we go through our annual assignments and reorganizations and whatnot. But I do think it's important to leave that away from this because I think it's two different things. I think what we're talking about in terms of the way we engage with these boards and committees, and the way that we're talking about needing to maintain relationships with these departments, is two separate things.
I appreciate splitting them into two separate things. I'm worried about the, setting up a structure where department heads come to us directly rather than going through Justin. Not that we aren't available to them, or not that we aren't. But I see my work with the departments more, like Jim described so eloquently, about being in a listening, understanding, having some appreciation for the responsibilities or the charges or the needs of their job. I think that's so important for us to make decisions as we sit here. And so, that part, I see, the us gaining information and gaining perspective is really super valuable, like Jim described. I think the, them coming to us with, "I have this idea," or "I have this," it starts to get super muddy. It's, it seems muddy to me.
So, in the case where Blair has a question, and sorry, Blair, you're here, so you're going to get all the examples tonight. Blair has an idea about changing the street signs. He wants to get engaged.
Wait, wait, wait.
No, no, no. I don't want to open up the door too much.
No, he's not thinking about that at all. He doesn't even dream about changing the street signs.
Let me, let me, let me put it to rest. Let's, let's leave it off the list. I think each of us individually can choose our own path on how we want to stay informed within the community. I appreciate all of the comments. I appreciate you're trying to find sort of a middle ground to work it out. I don't think it's necessary. I think if you want to stay current and visit with the police chief, you have every right to do that.
Yes.
Anita, I would expect you to do that. I intend to do that on a regular basis. It will never be done in a way that it interferes with Justin. It is a way just to stay informed and try and help the town. Nothing more, nothing less. This isn't about power or control or any of that. It's about staying informed and trying to make things better.
Yes.
It's all it's about. So, if the terminology's in the way, let's take the terminology off the table. It's not a big deal because in terms of my trying to stay informed, it's not going to change anything.
Right. You're going to do that good work.
So, I think we probably, I don't mean this in the wrong way, but we've probably wasted more time than we need to because it isn't necessary. We can get to the same place a different way. Let's do that. So, I'll acquiesce to not formalizing it on a piece of paper. And we'll all continue as we choose to get informed and be better prepared to discuss the issues that face the town.
So, I'm going to speak up about that. I think one of the things that, it is a lot of time to talk about this. I appreciate that. But I think what we are doing, hopefully, for our town and the world, is showing how two people who really respect each other can disagree and discuss, discuss something and come to a middle place or an understanding and still maintain that respect. And I think that's really needed in our country. And so, I appreciate being able to do that with you.
Yeah. I completely understand your point. If it's done incorrectly, and it's viewed as an opportunity to circumvent the authority of the town administrator, it becomes a very dangerous process. No question. You never, I mean, you know, I'm on the school board at KP. If there's a parent that has an issue, it has a chain of command. It doesn't start at the school committee. It ends at the school committee.
Right.
And so, until one goes through that whole process, the school committee should never entertain that consideration. I mean, that's just cardinal rule number one. You know it better than me. That same process holds true for Justin. And so, it was never viewed that way in my mind because it was never interacted in that manner.
Because it used to.
It was always an informational process. And it just was a way for people to stay informed and current. And I think that's a healthy thing. I think the more of that we do, the better positioned we are to try and make the right decisions to make this a better place for people. You know, the issues that these folks deal with are real. And they change daily. And we don't, I mean, I think we visited really meaningfully once in three months. So, you know, this isn't a regular event, but I need to know how I can help and what his issues that are facing. Nothing to do with his relationship with Justin. And I would do that, I've done that with Tim and the fire chief as well. It's just part of building relationships. So, they have a comfort level as well. And we're just one big happy team. And we need to be sure where the boundaries are. Life is always about boundaries.
Boundaries, yes, it is.
And making sure that we don't step over those boundaries. And that's your concern. And I think those are very valid concerns. And I suspect there are people that might abuse those boundaries. You know, we're not going to be one of those folks.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah. I understand. So, we've got it resolved.
So, after some healthy, robust dialogue, it appears that we've landed back at the liaison sheet as exists today. But we still have the open item of assigning liaisons as we go through this coming year. I feel like this list is slightly one-sided or two-sided.
Well, I was a late arrival.
He was a late arrival. A welcome late arrival.
So... So.
Thank you for that.
Jim, with that being said, are there any boards or committees that you feel particularly strongly about acting in the capacity of liaison for?
Well, King Philip, you know, you've got me there anyway, and that's, I probably logical.
You'll be at all meetings.
Seeing as I'm on the school committee there. I don't have a bias. I mean, if you're asking me a preference, I'm a finance guy by nature, so the advisory board would be a place I would enjoy working with, because that's a lot of what I like to do. Anita seems, you know.
I'm in a learning.
Why you're not with Norfolk Schools would be a question I would ask. It makes all the sense in the world.
Yep. I'm happy to stay with Norfolk Schools.
And I'm behind the, you know, I'm behind the scene on Fire Station Building Committee. That belongs to you two, because you've been much more involved in that. Community preservation might be one I could work with. I don't care. It's whatever. You can divide these up three different ways, and I'm perfectly fine with it.
I'm also pretty flexible. I do like to keep the schools with mine. And I have, some of these I've had for a while, and I haven't done a great job of liaising. So I'd like to still have the opportunity to improve that. The only thing I would say about advisory is because I'm still new, I learn a lot at those meetings. So, but like you were saying, having you be the liaison doesn't preclude me from attending. But I do learn a lot at those meetings, and I find that participating in those has been valuable to me. I think, Jim, you should pick just a couple.
Why don't we, why don't we do it the old-fashioned way? Kevin, why don't you start and pick the one you want, and we'll just go down and take our turns? How's that?
The old-fashioned draft. I like it. I like it.
Old-fashioned, okay.
Oh, I feel obligated with the chair sitting in the audience to take the planning board with the first pick in the 2023 Select Board Liaison Draft.
What position does he play?
[laughing]
All right. So you got planning board, huh?
[inaudible]
Anita, you get number two.
I'm going to take the Norfolk Schools would be my first choice.
I'll take KP.
Hey, Kevin, it's back to you.
Should the master, should the master plan committee be added to this list or be part of this list?
What's that?
The master plan committee. We designated a select board member. It's not a liaison ship per se, but it is a separate organization.
And it's a short-term committee. I don't, it could be.
It could be planning board slash master plan, if that's the case, because it is during their meetings entirely, right?
Why don't we think of it that way?
Okay. In that case, my second pick will be the CONCOM.
Anita, that comes to Anita. I'm going to say advisory next for me.
Jim did offer his third and fourth pick for your second pick, if you were interested in a trade on draft.
No, 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 no. Fourth and fifth, not the third. No, that's fine. That's fine. I'll go with zoning ZBA.
ZBA, Jim. I will maintain the pit projects.
Thank you for that. Then I'm going to add on the library.
I'll take CPC.
I will take the, do we have a Fire Station Building Committee Select Board associate any longer? We do?
Yeah, but we're going through the appointment process on that.
It looks like on this list, we have two of them.
Yeah, they're both, they're both Anita and I. If we, if we believe that we're going to maintain a member of the select board being part of that committee, I'll take the Fire Station Building Committee.
I'll take, stick with schools and take Tri-County for 300.
Counsel on aging. Everybody's avoiding the Board of Health.
I'll do that one next.
I very much enjoy my discussions with Mr. Bakanowski, so I'll take the Energy Committee.
And Anita, you took the Board of Health?
I'll take Board of Health.
Okay. I'll take Recreation.
What do we have? We have Historical Commission. Is that it?
That's all I have.
That's it. Does anybody feel very strongly about the Historical Commission?
We all feel strongly about the Historical Commission.
Well, feeling strongly of acting in the capacity of liaison.
I will take the Historical Commission.
Thank you.
I am the oldest one at the table. I get to do that.
Thank you, Jim.
Counsel on aging and historical one after the other. Got it.
Well, it's a package deal.
It's a package deal.
All right, Justin, you got all that?
We have it.
You sure?
We'll provide it up to you.
All right. Well done.
Thank you.
This does not require a motion or a vote, correct?
No.
This is just some alignment work that we're doing on the side.
Cheerful banter.
Beautiful. All right, our next item is to discuss the preliminary tax bill initiative, Justin.
Yes.
Oh, we were having so much fun.
So this evening, we have our chief assessor, Don Clark. We just want to highlight a change in the preliminary tax bill process. So he'll just give a brief, you know, introduction to that. And if there's any questions by the select board, Don's here to answer that.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So I'm just going to recap. I sent you guys an email on the 18th of May, I believe, and kind of just gave you a little history on what we're going to be doing here. But just to recap, recap, I'm sorry. We're going to be making a change to the process of billing on the preliminary tax bills, which allows the community to increase the preliminary tax bills by a factor that may not exceed 2.5%, plus any debt exclusion or overrides. This would uniformly applied, would be applied to all apostles and accounts within the municipality. The ability to tax this way has been allowed since 2004. The intention of taking advantage of this percentage adjustment is to help make the four tax payments more equal. The town, as you know, has started a new fire station project and could possibly have some other projects coming down the road in the near future. So going forward on these first two preliminary tax bills, we will be implementing the full 2.5%. So just to give you an idea of how this would impact the average single-family home that currently is assessed at 626, 131 in our town, with a tax bill of about $10,275, the estimated impact on this would be $112.70, or 18 cents on 1,000. So that's pretty much all I have on this. Like I said, that's all we're going to be doing on the first two preliminary bills. We won't be, we won't have any of the impact from the fire station, of course, until after November, when we know, when we start to pay on that, when we know about. So that's what I have tonight.
Thank you, Don. One thing I would just add is the reason why some communities have adopted this sort of principle is to smooth out the tax, the tax bill for residents, because when you keep the same sort of billing from the previous fiscal year, when you finalize your tax rate, you'll see a jump in your third and fourth quarter taxes, when generally you know these are increases are going to happen, you can smooth it out over time, so you won't have that large jump in the third and fourth quarter. So no additional anything. It's just smoothing it out for taxpayers.
I think you just hit the nail on the head about, the main point we want to get across here is that come the fourth quarter, you're not going to have a different value in what you're paying in your taxes. What you're going to have is four quarters that have relatively similar payments, as opposed to two quarters on a previous, two quarters on the next, and getting a big hit on the back end.
Correct.
That's correct.
I think it's a great change, and I thank you very much for doing it. It will help seniors a lot. It will help everybody. I shouldn't, I shouldn't single out seniors, but it certainly has a more dramatic impact on people that are on fixed income. And so, well done. I applaud it. It's a great change.
May I ask a question about the 112 impact? Is that quarterly or is that for annual?
That would be quarterly.
Quarterly, thank you.
It's split between the two preliminary tax bills.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Don?
No.
Justin, anything else?
I think it's a great, great thing. We were just trying, excuse me, sorry. We were just trying to make sure the community was informed. Obviously, the select board wasn't.
Is this going to be up in your, on the webpage?
I was just going to say, I didn't want to interrupt, Justin. We are going to put it up on our, on our webpage underneath the assessor's office. So there will be a posting on there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you so much, Don.
Okay, you're welcome.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thanks for hanging in there.
Yeah. Our next item tonight is our general updates, starting with our town administrator updates.
Great. I have one update that's good news. We are, I wanted to let the community and the select board know. I visited the senior center today. We are making substantial progress there. The work that our facilities director and our team there are doing is fantastic, along with our COA director. We've made some improvements there. Hopefully, that will make the senior center a much better place when we open it. So we anticipate, we will be opening in July. The senior center will be opening in July.
Oh, that's great news.
Excellent.
So that's fantastic news.
Great news.
Fantastic. Thank you, Justin. Anything else?
That's it at the moment.
From select board updates, I do have just one today. This weekend, on Saturday, is the greatest day in Norfolk. It is Community Day at the Homes Bus, the Homes property. For those who haven't had the opportunity to experience Community Day, it is a fantastic event that is amazing for families. There is bounce houses, there's games, there's local vendors, small businesses represented. It's just a great day for the community. The Norfolk Lions are the ones that host and put it on. They do a lot of great work. There'll be burgers and hot dogs throughout the day. There'll be a bunch of events throughout the day as well. One in particular is there is a dunk tank that will be available, and I am told that if we do, if we do get enough residents to fill out the master plan survey at the booth at Community Day, a select board member will get in the booth in a full suit and tie or a full business dress. We're not saying who it is, but we're just putting that out there. So.
Volunteered.
That, that'll be going on from 10 o'clock until 2 o'clock. Is that correct?
Yeah. Well, actually, it goes beyond that. It's probably, I think it's 4.
I think it's 4.
I should have known the timing a little bit better.
It's 4.
But it will be 11 to 4 is the time that we set.
Thank you, Donna.
For Community Day. So we hope to see everybody there this Saturday.
And there'll be antique cars. There's all kinds of good stuff there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Any updates for the rest of the board?
Thanks for the don't thank. I appreciate that. I don't know how I got talked into that. No, just a quick comment. KP graduation was on Sunday. An incredible class of students, 300, a little over 300 graduates. It's a wonderful ceremony at Stonehill College. It's just, and we have a new superintendent and a new principal, starting on July 1st. Ms. Bottomley, who is coming from Holliston, and Dr. Drolle, who is the superintendent or soon not to be superintendent in CCONC, and soon to be our superintendent, July 1st. And just publicly want to say that we are appreciative very much of Mr. Zini, who has been our superintendent at KP now for five years. He has done an incredible job. He has stabilized our school. He has moved our school forward. The relationships with all of the various personnel, the departments, the unions, everything is in, he's leaving us in a good position. We're in a healthy position. Dr. Mobley has been a super, she's been in the school, I think, I'm going to miss the date, but it's at least 18 or 20 years, close to that. And we will miss her as well. She's moving on as a director of a charter school. A new opportunity for her. I know she's excited about it, and, you know, it's part of the business where one moves into these new opportunities and challenges. We will miss her. But we're excited about the change. You know, with change comes new opportunity. But Mr. Zini and Dr. Mobley will be missed. And we will be recognizing them at the school committee meeting on the 12th. And I want to thank the board for, have we, Justin, do we have those proclamations for us?
Do.
Did it be signed?
Yes.
Thank the board for that. I'll be presenting them to them at the school committee meeting on the 12th. And you are all welcome, by the way, if you've got nothing to do for a spare night.
Nothing to do.
Which is highly unlikely.
Absolutely, nothing to do.
Monday night at 12 o'clock, at 12 o'clock, at 7 o'clock at the high school. If you would like to join us, love to have you. But I know nights out are tough for folks. So that's it for me.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. The only update that you triggered a thought is I believe that this Monday's school committee meeting in Norfolk, they're also honoring Linda Balfour. And so she will be honored at that time by the school committee, so.
That's where you need to be.
That's definitely where I need.
Because that's your home, too.
Yes, yes, sir.
That is your home as well.
Excellent. And.
Just out of curiosity, have you heard any plans?
There are plans. There's a party for her on June 30th. I reached out. I thought I reached out.
I had not heard.
I will reach out again.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, and make sure that you're invited.
I would not want to miss that.
Oh, my gosh. No.
She's been the only principal that school's ever had?
Absolutely. The grand dam. I had the, I had the honor of, she was principal of the year a few years back, and.
I remember.
She went to DC with all the other principals of the year, and I went with her as her significant other, because I am significant and I'm older. And so, it's pretty magnificent. So.
We heard stories.
Pardon?
I'm just kidding.
They're good stories, yes. She's a hoot.
Oh, I know. I've known her a long time. And by the way, Ms. Bottomley was re-elected principal of the year this year, the state of Massachusetts.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Great hire.
Seems to be, yeah. I don't know how that all happened, but anyway.
I did happen to see that our dedicated community page administrator, Karen Riley, did call out the fact that we do have a flurry of events going on this weekend for the community past just Community Day. In the evening on Saturday, we will have a fireworks display that's being put on by the Recreation Department.
Oh, yes. I read about that.
Over at Raymond Kennedy, in addition to the Norfolk Community League hosting a 5K on Town Hill on Sunday. So all those who are ready and eager to start running, you know where to be on Sunday.
And the fireworks are in honor of?
Yes. The Community Day has been renamed, Old Time Day, and it's in honor of Scott Dietrich.
Thank you.
Scott, for me, it's very personal, because Scott is a very, very close friend of mine, and his loss has been deeply felt by many. But Scott has been one of the leaders in the Lions community and one of the most giving individuals that you could possibly imagine. His commitment and dedication to the Lions in general and Norfolk and just collectively have, are, they're not, we couldn't record them all. And his loss is deeply felt by all of us. So the basic theme of the entire Community Day is really in honor of Scott. And his death was very sudden.
Excellent.
And he's deeply missed.
Thank you.
Thank you for that opportunity.
So I do believe that that concludes our updates. Moving on to the report of warrants, do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the warrants, as they're printed in the, in the agenda.
I will second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Warrants are approved. Do we have minutes to approve this evening?
Do not.
It turns out we do not.
Clerk is off the hook.
That's probably the clerk. The clerk has probably dropped the ball.
No, no.
No, you didn't, you didn't miss him.
No dropping of the ball.
Phew.
With that, we only have one last motion to make, and that is a motion to adjourn. Do we have one?
Go ahead.
Oh, no, I, please. No, no.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you so much, everybody. Have a fantastic evening.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
And Blair, I suspect you will never come and sit through an entire selectman's meeting again, right? Select board meeting.